Okay.
Okay. Meetings follow order and um. Let me explain up front. What we're doing here. Uh, the town of Waterbury has requested that the town planning committee open a second public hearing to receive public comments on the 2018 Waterbury Energy Plan as contained in the Waterbury Municipal Plan adopted December 3, 2018. So last, last, uh, since the last time we were here, the, um, the town plan and process, planning process had been approved, but we, uh, we needed to get more, another opportunity for public input on the, the energy part. So this is to assess whether the town's municipal plan and accompanying, so it's consistent with the state goals, compatible with. I said. The first purpose of this hearing is also to consider the issuance of a determination of energy compliance as per 24BFA. Purpose of the second hearing is to ensure the adequate and appropriate public notice has been provided. And also, the purpose of the hearing is to provide the opportunity for new comments on the plan to be considered. Comments provided at the first hearing have already been included in the record and may not be submitted again. Uh, so are any changes to the agenda? Hearing done, um. Any, uh, public comments about anything that's not on the agenda? No, okay. Next, Nancy. So, the public hearing is open. And, um. Comments from the, down front here.
Yes. Stuart Clark on the Planning Commission in Worcester. Uh. I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to have second chance to comment on Waterbury's energy plan. I'd just like to say that at the last meeting, uh, I spoke about corrections needed to map B5, which showed wind resources map, a map of defining areas for potential development of wind. At that time, there was a rebuttal to my comments. My explanation wasn't clear and I did not totally understand the rebuttal. Today, I'm going to speak with, hopefully with your language and show you that there are corrections needed to this Waterbury Wind Resource Map and to the Waterbury Biomass Map. Just to give you an overview of where I'm going, here's the abstract of my presentation. The Schutsville Wildlife Corridor. The area known as the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor is a known constraint. It's a regional and local critical resource area. Second point I'm going to make is that the areas of known constraint must be deleted from maps showing areas of possible energy development as defined by the methods in your documents. And the wind map, map B5, and Woody Biomass Map, B7, need correction before this town or this energy plan is approved. You need to delete the area of the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor from both of those maps. So is there any question, let me ask you this, this may simplify the presentation. Is there any challenge to the concept that the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor is a known constraint?
I have a question, Stuart. What did you, what, how did you categorize the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor in your comments?
Well.
You, you named it as a certain kind of resource. Can you just tell me what?
Schutsville Wildlife Corridor is a regional and locally identified critical resource. That's what I'm, that's how I'm categorizing it now.
Where, is that your categorization? Critical, I mean, I, I know that it is on ANR map. It is a definite wildlife.
I am reporting that it's a critical resource as reported by the Stowe Land Trust, the Vermont Land Trust, Staying Connected, which is an organization that deals with wildlife movement across New England. So have I answered your question, Steve?
Well, yes, I, uh, I guess I would like to comment, um.
Sure.
Is that okay if I comment on that, Mr. Chair? So, so on, um, map B2 is the, um, known constraint map and that map has a, a list of known constraints. I'm, I'm not going to read all of these. It does, um, includes state significant natural, uh, natural communities and rare, threatened, endangered species, um, and so on. It's part of the heritage inventory. It does not list, uh, critical, identified critical resources as a known constraint. It has vernal pools. Um, you know, it, it, it does list other items, uh, the state significant natural communities. My understanding that this map maps those communities and, and this is not, this area is not included. So, um, my, my comment is that, um, this known constraint map, which was prepared by Central Mark Regional Planning Commission, uh, based on state data, does not identify the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor, uh, doesn't have a category of critical resources. It has all of these other categories which are mandated, as I understand it, mandated by the state. That's the state's list of known constraints that we're required to put in and it's not identified as any of those known.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your comment. I like the format that we're in right now because now I know what you're thinking and I can report to you and to the board that that map is wrong. Okay?
How do we get it corrected? If it's, if it came from Central Mark Regional Map and that's.
I'm going to demonstrate why it's wrong.
I, I don't, I understand that, you know, we, we under, I, we understand that it may be wrong. My issue is, we tend to have to go with the maps that we have and so now the issue is, how do you correct it?
It's a GIS, it's a GIS product. You go in, you make the change.
No, if the state doesn't make the change, I'm not sure that, uh, Claire, help me out.
You gotta look at, you gotta look at your plan language as well. That deals with wildlife habitat.
Yes.
Under land use, page two dash seven.
Yeah.
There, there's something else that's missing from that map and I'd like to tell you about that. In, in your Waterbury Energy Plan on page 30 is a section that is titled mapping. It talks about many things and then you move down to the bottom of page 30 and it talks about constraints. And on page 31 is a definition of known constraints. It includes a definition of known constraints that was not used on map B2 that Steve refers to. The final known constraint that we are going to focus on today on page 31. Tell me if you want me to slow down.
Where's page 31?
Page 31 in the energy, in the energy plan that we're discussing. All set? Page 31, the, the final known constraint in that first bullet list at the top of this page. Regionally or locally identified critically brief, critical resources are known constraints. If we accept that definition, which was not used on map B2, we can move on to the packet that you received today from Claire. In that packet was the evaluation tool with check marks on various pages for the evaluation of the Waterbury Energy Plan. On page 17 of that evaluation packet, I'll show you what it looks like. You got it? On page 17, the Schutsville Wildlife Cor- Corridor. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of the packet.
Oh.
I mean, I've got one.
There's a copy of the packet, right?
Wow, great. It's this, this pool right here.
I have it.
Okay. No, no, that's, we're not there, we're, we're somewhere.
You're on page, you're on page 17.
Yeah, oh, okay.
You're on page 17, A5.
Yep, yep, okay. So it says the Schutsville Corridor is a local. Right? Locally identified as a critical resource.
It, it's identified as a constraint by the town.
Well, that's fine. The, we're, what we're trying to establish here is that there are criteria for defining known constraints. One of those criteria are, is it locally identified?
Yeah, and my understanding.
And this, and other, other other criteria are, is it regionally significant and is it a critical resource? Okay, so we've established it's locally identified, locally recognized. It's also regionally recognized because, you know, as, as, as given in information presented by Stowe Land Trust, Staying Connected, which is an organization studying wildlife movement and migration across New England and the Vermont Land Trust. Those three organizations, along with Vermont Fish and Wildlife, um, have identified the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor, and I'm quoting now. It is, it is one of the five most important wildlife crossings in the state and a critical part of an international network of connected forest habitats in the Northeast. To me, that demonstrates the regional nature of this corridor and its critical importance. There really is, can't be any question. And I guess I'd, I'd like to know the answer to this.
We don't have a question about that because in, in the plan, it states categorically, there will be no development in that area.
In which area?
In the Schutsville Trust, Land Trust.
In what plan?
What?
In your energy.
Okay, where, okay, what page are you referring?
Page 32, the way I read it anyway. There are several locations throughout the town being as being unsuitable for development. And you go on to the top of page 33 and it says the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor is indicated on the da-da-da, which is part of the Waterbury Town Plan, is referenced and discussed in other sections. The way this reads to me is that the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor is part of this paragraph that says, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, that that's unsuitable for development.
Okay.
Which, which makes the map that they provided in conflict with that language.
Well, now, okay, so what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing the issue is, if, the, I want to go back to one question that I have and, and I need some guidance here from, from the staff.
What about this sentence, in these locations, development may be possible, however, the specific sighting scale and amount of land disturbance will be a critical factor to consider.
That's the conflict.
Maybe this is the conflict, yeah.
I don't want to interrupt Stu's presentation, but I just want to add, augment a little bit what Stu's trying to convey and what I will also convey. The most important thing about these plans is, right here, here's the conversation. And we're involved in this at this level. This is going to go to the PUC for their interpretation. And if there's five different ways to read the same language, this plan language is already a problem. And you know what? It's going to be who's got the best lobbyists at the PUC and the best attorneys. And it may, most likely won't be the town and the town won't get it straight, but I'll get into that later. So it's really important that there be no question, there's a conflict. Go ahead, Stu.
Janice, I've, I've missed that point. I'm glad you made it. I'm, I'm basing my, my comments on this map, this map, I think it's B5, which shows potential wind resources all through the, the eastern edge of the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor.
Can I just, and it, go ahead. I, I don't know if it's relevant or not, but right down where she's reading from, at the bottom of page 32, it starts out by saying that these places have been identified as being unsuitable for development, but this is in, in the area of sighting locations and, uh, and then it continues, in these locations, development may be possible, however, the specific sighting scale and amount of land disturbance will be a critical factor to consider. That to me is not, is not, uh.
Right, that's not saying.
That second part you read from the map, right?
No, 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 this is the next, the next, uh, two sentences down from, from, uh, it's been identified as being unsuitable for development. In general, these areas have been identified due to the area being considered. So that to me doesn't seem strange enough at all.
Well, they're in conflict.
Suitable, but it's possible and no need.
They're in conflict. If there were a septic site and there was a wetland, you'd say that's unsuitable. But then it says, but it's possible. So which is it?
I, I don't think it should say it, possible basically.
I think we can make a, a clear statement if we use this concept of known constraints. On the methodology, the description of methodology in the energy report, on page 31, again, this is related to how, how maps are going to be developed. Under methodology, it says, with all known and possible constraints identified, this information was overlaid on resource maps. Where known constraints existed, in other words, where the Schutsville Corridor exists, resource areas were deleted. Yet this map shows potential development in the Schutsville Corridor.
So you basically need to just cut that piece right out.
So what, what I.
Doesn't belong in the map.
Well, what I'm asking, I guess, what, what I'm hearing you request is that the map reflect what the language says. That's what I'm hearing you request.
Well, yes.
Okay.
But, but this, again, Stuart, I think, I think you're misreading this language on the bottom of 32. It, it talks about, in the last paragraph, it makes a general statement that there are several locations throughout the town where it's identified as being unsuitable for development. Uh, that's a very general statement. And then it goes into specifics. And it says in general, these areas have been identified due to their significant, significance of supporting wildlife habitat. And then it says in these locations, development may be possible. However, the specific sighting scale and amount of land disturbance will be a critical factor to consider. And then it says that includes the Schutsville Corridor. So, um, I, I, I understand that, that, um, this is going from, from a general statement down to specifics. When it gets into the specifics, it's saying that these areas, there has to be a more specific analysis for any development. It's not prohibiting development when it gets to the specific areas. It's saying that in these locations, development may be possible. It's very clear about that. However, the specific sighting scale and amount of land disturbance will be a critical factor to consider. These areas include the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Because of your, the point of, is, my first inclination was to say, I can't see how you in any way want the word may or maybe possible to be connected with development in the Schutsville Corridor. But then it occurred to me that what you may be, what you may be referencing is that you simply legally cannot, preclude all developments anyplace. I don't know whether that's true or not. In other words, it, it, you can't, you can't say development is not possible in the Schutsville Corridor. You have to say it may be possible, but shouldn't be there.
Well, or me, let me respond. And, and I think, um, Jan, you made this comment at the last meeting. If we're going to prohibit, um, energy development in any areas, we have to prohibit all development. So we do not prohibit all development in the Schutsville Hill Corridor. We just had a zoning permit for, um, a, a house addition in the Schutsville, in this corridor off of Ruby Raymond Road. The permit was issued because it's allowed. So, um, so we're not prohibiting development. I think what this is saying is that where constraints have been identified, there, there needs to be an analysis done of any development to, to determine whether that is, is suitable or not. So.
So it's possible that this is the strongest prohibitive language that you can.
Right, exactly. We can't, we can't prohibit development. We can show it as, um, certainly show it as a known constraint. I just wanted to make one additional point. I'm not aware of any place in our plan that states that the Schutsville Wildlife Corridor is, um, a regionally and locally identified critical resource. If, I, I understand in general terms, I understand what you're saying, Stuart, that there certainly is a lot of, um, statements and opinions that it is a very important wildlife area. We identify it, um, on our, on our forest map on 2.2 dash 7. We, we identify it as a highest priority connectivity block. That's how it's identified. And there's certainly language in the plan that talks about this and it also talks about doing, uh, developing a specific map of the area. But I can't find any language in, Stuart, you're morgueing off, I'm just telling you. Will you just finish my statement, please? I, I don't find any language in our plan, our municipal plan, that states that the Schutsville Wildlife, Wildlife Corridor is a regional and locally identified critical resource.
I want to get this, while Stephen brought this up, this keeps, this issue keeps coming up at our regional monthly meetings about what, if we restrict development or ban development, let's use that term, um, then we have to ban all development. There's an interpretive memo. You may have seen it. Hopefully you all, some of you have seen it. Claire probably has and, and might remember it. Um, the Commissioner of DPS interpreted, wrote an interpretive policy memo for how they would review. Remember DPS used to review and approve plans until the Regional Planning Commission got its energy plan approved. And in it, she said, Commissioner Tierney said, that you can restrict based on scale. So that's what we did at the regional level. We set hub heights, we set other things. So I, I, I guess, so that's one point. So you can restrict without hindering your housing developments or your additions or whatever. You can deal with scale. Um, for instance, if, and I, I guess it's what this comes down to is, does Waterbury want Schutsville protected against large industrial scale energy development or not? I mean, really, what is your intent? And that's not meant to, a trick question. I really, that if the intent is, wow, we'd be freaked out if a big multinational company came marching in here tomorrow and proposed that project and we think this plan will be a tool that we can use to stop it, I will tell you right now, having witnessed at least 60 PUC and PSP hearings, that's what I do for a living. This plan, what it does is, it, let me back up. Act 174 was intended to be, kind of throw a bone at municipalities. They have been complaining, the LCDA have been complaining to the legislature, um, the complaint being that energy projects are exempt from zoning. We have no say. We come in with our plans and the PUC says, well, that's a cute plan, but we're going to do whatever we want to do. We've seen this time and time and time again. Despite what municipalities have done. What that's done is because of all this bad precedent, it's forced municipalities to go along with projects that they revive because the energy developers have the power, the money and the power. And they come in and they say, look, we're going to ram this through just like the last one. And the towns are like, okay, well, give us some money and we'll support your project. That's what's happened. That's not how you plan. You shouldn't plan based on, you know, how much money developer is going to do, give you. The idea of 174 was, we're going to give you tools if you choose to step up, but you've got to step up. And you've got to have words like shall and shall not. If you leave, this is what I call the, uh, what do you call it? Known and possible. Possible constraints is what I would call fill in the blank. So I think what the intention of this plan is, Stephen, stop me, please. So just how I would read this plan. Waterbury is concerned based on all the maps and the language that the shoot, about the Schutsville Corridor getting damaged and its, and its ability to move wild, wildlife movement. It's the last one in this area. It's the last one, folks. The ability for wildlife to migrate back and forth between the Green Mountain Range and what is the other range?
The Northeast Kingdom.
Yeah, well, and through the whole rest of Quebec. Um, we don't want to see that damage. But what happens is when you leave it as possible, what that then is, you can't come at the last minute if it's not in the plan. Waterbury can't say, oh, we developed a map, I think Steve may have mentioned, we're going to develop a map after we've arrived at a plan and we're going to submit that to the PUC. See, this is our interpretation and we don't want this. So the PUC is going to say, tough, it wasn't in your plan. You've basically said it's a possible constraint, which means you possibly can't develop or you possibly can. Either one is valid. So it's up, you've basically said it's up to us to decide. Because at the PUC, towns don't decide. They try to provide the most compelling case they can if they leave it open like this plan does. And, but at the end of the day, the PUC can take it or leave it and the developer is going to give their most compelling case and they're going to take it or leave it. So if, so the effect of this line, I just want everyone to understand, the effect of this possible constraints is, it does nothing in terms of improving the authority that these energy plans were intended to improve. It does nothing at the PUC.
Just before, um, I just want to say, it, it seems as, you know, I totally understand that and it seems as though the key that you're trying to hand Steve is that, uh, we definitely think that this should be stronger and you can make it that way because, uh, as you said, you, but because of, because of something like the idea of scale, you can in fact ban the, the big development.
Well, I pose as a question. I don't know what Waterbury wants because they seem kind of schizophrenic here. They're saying, my God, this is so critical. And then I think because of the interpretation of Act 174, the statute, lacking the input from that policy interpretation memo by the Commissioner, that, that, they, they don't know how far they can go without constraining all development. I think that's what I understand, right?
Uh, Ron, did you know?
Yeah, um, I listen to listen. I, for a moment go back to, I, Stu, my septic system. I, for a moment, go back to, I do my septic systems and that. I look at this like, for instance, if, I can speak where I can't, if we had a developer on a piece of property that had 50 acres or whatever, and we knew there was evidence of septic constraints in different places with high water or whatever, we would, as a town group, we would look at each law individually and see, did it apply? Now, this is a general area we know is a problem, but your law is, we've tested individually and put septic, a lot across the street, maybe not. So I'm interpreting this maybe as a thing of scale. This is a corridor, I think definitely can't be willy-nilly have development permits. So if a developer comes in and says, I want to put a wind tower, A, it has to be, they have to prove it's not going to damage what you're worried about, because, and the town has to prove that this is not the place. However, if developer B comes maybe half a mile away, they're in a situation where they're not going to have that problem. So it's got to be a thing of scale, but you have to write it in to give the town permission to require individual developers to prove, and individual opponents to prove yes or no. We have to, that has to be part of the plan. And I interpret Waterbury as saying, this is possible, but it's not automatic. It's, we're reserving the right to investigate site by site.
But they don't have the authority under the PUC.
All right, I know.
Under law.
All right, that's where we.
I'd like to respond to what Steve said. He said, we have not identified the Shuteville corridor as a critical regional resource. And that's true. You didn't do that in the plan. And I'm saying, that's a mistake. There is no question that this is an area of known constraint. And using your language and the rules that you have in this plan, it clearly says, if you have an area of known constraint, it must be eliminated as an area of possible development. Is there anyone here who really thinks this is not critical? It's of regional significance. This is the only link between the Green Mountains and the Northeast Kingdom. It is of vital importance. It is, it is something that has been overlooked when Map V2 was put together. It is an area that should have no development. You know, I'm asking you to eliminate the area shown on Map V5 as having potential for wind development. Eliminate the area that is covered by the Shuteville Wildlife Corridor, because this is a known constraint under the criteria of regional and locally identified critical resource. And I'm changing the word "or" to "and" as I spoke. Proper statement is regional or locally identified critical resource. There's no question it's critical. You yourselves have already identified it as a local resource, and if you look at the information from the sources I've presented, there is no question that it's a regional It seems to me, I just don't understand why Waterbury cannot exempt this important, well-defined area from energy development. There's, there is a hundred, 1.8 million megawatt hours of renewable energy identified, and something like 36,000 are required.
Steve, I'm just, I'm just wondering, we're, we don't seem to be, well, don't seem to be agreeing on that, but do you feel that the town has an issue with how hard this is being pressed, that this is a known constraint, and you absolutely should say nothing is going to happen there? Or is it more the case that you agree with them, and maybe there's just something in the plan or the map or something that doesn't state it as forcefully as they want to?
Well, I don't, I don't agree with Stuart. I think, and the reason is because the mapping that was done for our Forest Resources Map and the Possible Constraints Map, if you go to the Possible Constraints Map on CHB3, one of the categories on the Possible Constraints Map, if you look at the list on the right side, this is the Possible Constraints List, one of those items are, it's about the Vermont Fish and Wildlife, Vermont Conservation Design include the following: highest priority forest blocks, connectivity, interior and physical landscape diversity. So this is a mapped area of highest priority connectivity. This is the Shuteville Wildlife Corridor. And if you go to the Forest Resources Map 2-7, that's how it's mapped. And Stuart, just let me finish, okay? I'm starting to get angry, okay? So just cool it, all right? I need you to let me speak, okay? So the, I think it's very important that this, that this energy plan is consistent with the municipal, the rest of the body of the municipal plan. So it's very clear in the municipal plan, we've incorporated a map that includes Shuteville Wildlife Corridor as a highest priority connectivity block. It's very clear in the Possible Constraints Map in the list that that area includes highest priority connectivity blocks. I'm not arguing that it isn't an important resource, but it's very important that all this is consistent. Otherwise, it undermines the other mapping in the municipal plan. And I'm not willing to make a change in our plan that undermines some other part of the plan. That's irresponsible, okay? So I'm giving you that comment emphatically. The other point I'd like to make is, the town spent $170,000 fighting Verizon on a cell tower that was proposed on North Hill in the Shuteville Wildlife Corridor, based on information in our former municipal plan. That's what the town did. There is no question that the town is opposed to large-scale towers of any kind on Shuteville Hill. So I don't think we have to question the town's.
Does it say that in the plan?
Excuse me? No, it doesn't.
You gotta ask me. You said it's not a question, so I'm asking.
Right, it does not. So that's, that's a fact of what happened in a case before the Public Utility Commission, okay? That was a case before the commission, and we won the case, okay? So there's no question about how the importance of the Shuteville Wildlife Corridor plays out in a case before the Public Utility Commission, because that's what's happened, and that's what we spent on lawyers and expert witnesses to make our case, and we won the case. So I just, I think, I don't agree with Stuart. I don't agree with you. I think it's irresponsible to put additional language or change maps that create issues with other maps that the Central Mountain Regional Planning Commission has prepared for us. I think the issue here is consistency. The issue, as it says on the agenda, is whether, you know, we have a determination of energy compliance. I, to me, it's clear, and I don't think we can change a map of known constraints based on other documentation that's out there when it's not mapped, from what I've seen, by either the town or the state as a critical resource. I haven't seen that map. I haven't seen the language in the plan that states that. If someone can demonstrate that it's there, that's fine, but that's my, my.
I think it's kind of my turn.
Oh, okay.
Thanks. And I hope you're not mad at me, Steve.
Well, I'm irritated at the whole process, because I'll tell you why. We've gone over these issues. This is the third hearing where we've gone over these issues. The town has presented its case at all three times. We've spoken before, the Town Plan Review Committee, we've spoken before the full commission, and I just think we're beating the dead horse. I really feel that way. I think there has to be some trust that our intentions are good. It played out in a case before the Public Utility Commission. I don't think we have to second guess what good work the Central Regional Planning Commission did for the town. I just don't, I think it's irresponsible to try to change maps that were done responsibly.
Okay, so now, now I understand your position. Thank you. So let me, let me, please, Mr. Chair. First off, I want to explain why I am here. This connector is, and I will lead, I will cite. This connector, as Stuart has said, is the sole connector between the Worcester Range and the Green Mountain Range for wildlife. It's all that's left, because everything else has been destroyed. It's not because there's a unique drainage there, it's because everything else has been eaten by development, folks. That's the reality. So now we're down to the last one. The bear and the wildlife are a state resource. Those bear and wildlife come through my town. I'm on the other side of this. My town has an interest in this, and I'm here to express the concern that the state's wildlife and the wildlife that would be visited upon my town hang in the balance. I'm also here to remind everybody that the regional plan says in its introductory language, and I'm going to paraphrase, that while the Regional Planning Commission endeavors to work and interpret its plans consistently with municipal plans, at the end of the day, they understand that municipalities have leeway under this plan, and the Regional Planning Commission reserves the right to challenge municipalities, and they've done this before. Challenge a municipality before Act 250 and/or the PUC, where they have conflicting viewpoints on what is appropriate for the region and the region's interests. I'm here because I don't see, because it is last remaining quarter and the last of the last, it's all that's left, I don't think it's being protected enough. Waterbury did a great job protecting it that time. Steve and I are getting up in age, and 10 years from now, Steve may be retired, I don't know, this may be going to work until he's retired. And I will lead, and the select boards change, the planning committees change, and I will tell you, in my every experience, I kind of spoke about this before the hearing started, what happens is, when the language is as written here at the local level, the Waterbury level, Waterbury is at a disadvantage. And yes, they could spend 170, or they may say, we can't do that again. Or, this is not a little Verizon tower, whatever, I don't remember what it was. This is Iredrola Renewable Energy, they are a mega, mega corporation with bottomless resources, and we can't fight them. So we're going to reach an agreement, and what is likely to happen, I will tell you, this has happened in every single case with these huge corporations. They know they're going to lose, so they cut a financial deal. And that may, in the end, be the best deal that the Waterbury can get, but that does nothing to protect this corridor. It might have protected Waterbury's interests, but the corridor will be lost. So now we've got a municipality forced to advocate for a project that they really sticks in their craw, but it's a lesser evil than winding up with nothing. And there is precedent. The most important, the most critical bear habitat in the state of Vermont ever identified, and actually probably one of the most in New England, was where a Deerfield Wind Project was built. They have now, they mapped, they collared the bear before that project got built, by the way, it was approved by the PUC, despite fish and wildlife and everyone opposing it because of really broad discretion that was provided to them. This is before Act 174. They said, well, if wildlife says it's not going to, it's going to hurt the bear, and Iredrola's experts say it won't hurt the bear. So we're going to allow it to go forward, but you have to study the bear. So guess what they did? They studied the bear before the project got built, so they got a benchmark of bear use of the area. And now the data's in, now that the project is built, and guess what's happened? The bear, the frequency of the bears going to that area has diminished significantly. The bears are now raging really far, and they're now having to cross highways, and they're getting killed. They're having to go into cornfields, and they're getting killed, shot, because you're allowed to shoot them. They're going to New York and Massachusetts where they used to stay in this.
Excuse me, there's a 718 to do.
Yeah, it does, now, I'm explaining the process. Steve, can you stop being rude?
I'm sorry.
That's twice, okay, Steve? And I only know you as being not a rude guy, so I don't understand. I know you're insulted by this, because I think you're at the end of this. But I, and I apologize, I just, I'm just floored that we are at this point, and I am just imploring you, actually, the process is, you either give it a thumbs up, or you give it a thumbs down, you can advise Steve to change the maps. You can't change the maps. It's his plan. It's his community's plan. That's my understanding of this process. I don't believe this is consistent because of the criticality of this quarter. What's going on and what can be allowed in that quarter under this proposed plan is consistent with the regional plan. And the intent of the plan, if you look at 2-7, the bottom of that, and how it speaks to critical species and migration areas, habitat decline, habitat connectivity, I can see a circumstance where our Regional Planning Commission is going to wind up challenging the town. And I guess we could do that, but I think there's a problem.
Well, I just wanted to put a couple things in, and one.
Oh, okay, so one more thing, and I'm done, and I'm done, for the night.
Make sure you are.
Yeah. And one last thing I meant to say, and it has to do with kind of the reaction we're getting here.
We're being preached.
I know we're at the end, but if at the end means what's being said today gets lesser consideration and lesser deference than it would have been earlier on, then there's no reason to have this hearing today, okay? So you, you as judges and jury need to consider what's presented today with the same eyes and ears as you would had it been presented a year ago. I'm done. Thank you.
That addresses one of the things I was going to say, which is that I think this is only the second or third municipality that has gone through this process with the energy.
This is actually the first.
First. So I, and I think that is part of the reason why, you know, it's, everything is not right out there, everybody knows exactly how it's going to go down. You say, is this important that you do this now? It's so important that you take it, it should be available, it should be forced on every other municipality that is going to have to go through this so that they don't come to this point. But we're here. And the other thing is that it's probably not an answer at all, but I have a sense that Waterbury is going to go ahead and go with this the way it is. And that's, that's pretty important, to get that, to get that approval. But I think that then it's possible, once, once a plan is, is in place, it's not a big deal to change certain small things, once it's in place. You might not even need any more than a hearing on it or something. So it's, it's possible that, you know, you could, we could, that if this goes forward, there's a way to maybe change the wording, put some more teeth in later on. The other, the only other thing is. The other, the only other thing is with the, with the map is, would it just be, if something's a known, a known constraint, and therefore, none of the other things really apply because, because the known constraint wipes it out, is it possible to just black that out in the map so that other categories don't show up as applying to it? I don't know whether that's any kind of a deal or not, it's just, I mean, that seems to be the confusion. I mean, you've got a certain color of green that means known constraint, and then you have, I don't know, yellow lines that mean something else, which seems to open it back up to some kind of a possibility there. I don't know. Stuart, I guess, you're on.
Try and make it short. I'm, I'm a geologist, I make maps. And if there's an error in a map, you change the map. It's, it's not a big deal. You know, I've shown you that the Shuteville area can be classified as a known constraint.
Okay, so can I just interrupt and ask a question to get kind of down to the bottom, and I'm hearing you say is, Shuteville is a known constraint, you want it off the map, you want it deleted from the map, is that what I want, bottom line?
Yeah, we want that area to be off limits to development.
But I think you need a higher elevation, because it goes all the way down to...
Right, right, the, the, I want that, the area that's shown for possible wind development along the flank of the Worcester Range, I want that deleted.
Okay.
For known development, and on the, on the map D7 of biomass, biomass production, the entire area of the Shuteville Corridor should be off limits to biomass production.
So Claire, I have a question, and this is just trying to understand it. Who determines that when there's an, I don't remember on any of the energy, you were on the energy thing for the regional, right, Steve?
Well, that's not real, I wasn't on the energy committee, I can out comment.
Or we're John, I don't know. Anyway, who, who decided that when a known constraint is a known constraint, it was to not be mapped, it was to be deleted? I didn't think that that was a rule.
No, so the, the methodology was established when the regional energy plan was written, and that these maps here are the same maps you would find in our regional plan at a regional scale.
Right.
And that the identification of regionally known constraints would have been a responsibility of the planners and volunteers and committee members that were involved in creating the regional energy plan.
And so when they did that, did they make that determination that if there was a map and there was a known constraint, that area would be blackened or deleted off the map? I thought it was an overlay. I, I thought it was overlay. Here's what we have as known constraint, and then here's what we have as able to be, you know, and that overlay itself, so that there was never a deletion per se, but that it was an overlay.
But the known constraint needs to go on top of a possible constraint.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean that it's totally deleted. It means that you show from the overlay what goes...
It's in, in the methodology, that's in this plan, it says it will be deleted, in other words, made off limits.
So, so I think, just to clarify, I think if I, the Shuteville Hill Wildlife Area was not identified as a regional constraint during the process of creating the regional energy plan. Therefore, it was dictated to the town that this area is a known constraint, and therefore you must decide, you must also follow the regionally known constraints. So I, I think it's a question of the, if, if the Shuteville Hill is a regionally significant, then that would be a responsibility of the Regional Planning Commission to make that identification. At the local level, the town has the choice to determine what they feel is a local constraint, a local known constraint. Waterbury has chosen not to identify Shuteville Hill as a known constraint.
Local constraint. And that's what Steve, that's what you are objecting to?
Waterbury has identified it as a local constraint, which is one of the criteria for being a known constraint. I'm just working from the language in the plan and the methodology in the plan. You know, we can, we can get emotional, emotional about how important this area is, but when you get down to the logic of, it meets the criteria of being a known constraint, therefore it has to be deleted by the, as set, as stated by the methodology, then why can't it be done?
So, so can we, can we decide whether Waterbury has designated this as a, as a local, locally known constraint? This, these notes say that it has, but somebody just stated that it has not, so...
Well, let me try to explain as, as best I can. I apologize for getting angry, I just, this is very challenging. So, the way the plan worked around the Shuteville Corridor is that in working with the Regional Planning Commission, there was a lot of discussion about mapping the corridor, and it was decided to make it an action item in the plan that a, a map of the corridor would be developed, because we hadn't had a public process in all the work that our Conservation Commission had been doing around the Shuteville Corridor, to develop a map that was publicly vetted, that was in a plan, or was a state map. So we don't have a map that, of, of the Shuteville Corridor beyond the state map of the highest priority connectivity block. So, we deferred to the highest priority connectivity block in the forest resource, it's actually map two dash five. So, this is why the, the, it's listed as a possible constraint as a, a highest priority connectivity block. So there is not, there is no map that we can refer to for what you might call a critical resource. There's language that identifies the Shuteville Corridor as a very important resource. So, so that's why the plan needs to be consistent, needs to be consistent with the regional energy plan as well. It doesn't mean moving forward, there's a, that we will be developing a map of the Shuteville Corridor, and it will likely be incorporated into a future amendment to the energy plan, to the municipal plan. So that's where we are as a community, the Conservation Commission is doing conservation projects in that area, working with landowners, there's a lot going on, but we don't have that map that we can use to say, "Okay, this is a known constraint." It doesn't exist as an official map at this point. So that's why we, we do not want to change what's in the current plan.
Are, are you, are you willing to accept the maps from the, from the land trust?
No, it is not a map that's been locally, publicly vetted, I'm not aware it's been vetted regionally, it, through the, a public process and, and received some kind of official sanction. So we, we discussed those various maps, and they have not been incorporated into the municipal plan at this time.
So, I just wanted to make sure you understand, what I understand. So, and this was actually brought to my attention by a former legislative counsel attorney. Towns without energy plans are going to be less likely to be targeted by big energy developers than those with plans, and that was what I was, was first told. And then my town got a call from Downs, Rappel, and Martin, and it turns out they're calling every, you probably got a call too? They called every single town and asked if they had an energy plan in place. The towns have energy plans in place because they get prefer, greater deference at the PUC, that's the idea, right?
Right.
They are going to fo, focus on the towns that have that plan, because it's going to be easier to get energy projects through where there, there's the opportunity provided in the plan. So if the town said, "This is good for energy development, like this plan does," they're going to say, "Well, we're going to come." And Waterbury's got, that's prime, prime, prime stuff, man. And so they're likely, once this plan's approved, Steve, I just want to let you know, there's a wide, it's wide open there, they're going to come here, and just so you know, I'm not saying this is wrong, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying this plan can't be approved, really. What I'm saying is, I hope you know what you're going into, because chances are really good they're going to come, and because it's a possible constraint, that means it's a possible development, which means it can go either way, which means they will go before the Public Utility Commission, and it's going to be Public Utility Commission's decision whether or not that development's appropriate or not. It's not going to be the town's. The town can add to the record, saying, "Please don't do this for these reasons," and the developer's going to say, "This is appropriate, in fact, the town said this is point winning." So, that's it.
I have two things, and I'm just reading here, this is, unless I probably ruined one, the energy plan is kind of this A, Dr. Seaver, two thousand and eighteen, all right, A5, seems to be very clear, one local, one local constraint has been ident, identified, a local, it has been identified, one for development of any kind, so it is, first, it's been identified in their plan, says that I hit local constraints, right? So I, I'm not sure why we'd have that big discussion necessarily. Secondly, unless I felt, I was on the energy group, and as I fell asleep during our discussion, when they came to us with energy, I said this to several people, I don't think our group had too much say, unless I missed the definition of what they were doing, going to do, they, they said to identify constraints. Now, they, unless I missed something, I think we all assumed constraints were constraints. I did, and it's, the, the state, so much for us, my impression, was not clear on identifying what authority or what power a constraint has. Couldn't we make exceptions? Couldn't we make the map? And so I, I don't think the state language, our energy group had much, really much say in some of this, they're just saying, "The state wants this much energy, blah, 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 blah," and just, "I'll put your, as you say, overlay constraints on it," to, and we'll say, and that was not, I mean, and I understood, so the constraint was a constraint, it was there, it was there. And apparently, I don't know what, so maybe I misunderstood the terminology there. So, I, I think if that's a constraint, that's a constraint, which means no energy there. All right. And I can see Steve's point of view with being a little fuzzy, because how accurate is this map? How accurate is the data? I'm, I'm thinking, I'm kind of picking, so like fifty feet, a hundred feet, two hundred feet zones, so that would be a thing, if I was a developer, thinking of, I have, one of the things I would come and pick on, is the accuracy of, especially when you're talking about wildlife, which, that's one of the things I, as a developer, would come and pick on. So I think that, I, to me, the, the map, and I think Waterbury sort of has to put some language in, this is not an exact one foot constraint, someone would be out there, and I envision this, by measuring with a tape measure, well, here's the line, we're on this side, not that side, if I was a developer, that's my thing. So I think in that sense, Waterbury has to, can't take the map exactly to the, the middle of face value to the inches, they have to allow, they have to, it's going to have to be the side, especially on maybe the fringes of the area. So I, I don't see a Waterbury in the void, can say, "This is the exact map," because I would say, "What do you mean, exact?" And, and so in that sense, I, I agree with, but as far as a constraint, it's a constraint. If, if, they, they think that's, that piece of land is within the wildlife corridor, and it is, it comes under the constraint. But if you refer exactly to the map, then my mind is, you're going to be picking on a dozen feet, which side of the line. So, and I, so anyhow, that's, that's my...
So, so here's the way the case lays out in my brain. So it seems to me that the town of Waterbury recognizes that the Shuteville Corridor is a problem, and they plan to do more work that would result in an amendment to the town plan, that would then serve as the constraint, I shouldn't use the word constraint, it would serve as the, better definition, stop to, to future development in that area in future PUC hearings. Now, if it's true that the PUC is not going to look at the amendment in the same way it looks at the original...
Well, if it goes through the planning process, it will. But if it's just a, a map that's made outside of the plan, it will have no force or effect.
Right.
But Steve said later, "Do you change?"
Well, it's an action in the plan to do that map.
Yeah, but you can't change regs, you know, outside, you have to go back to the plan, it has to be incorporated through the process.
But, but that's the plan.
Yeah, that's the intention.
That's the intention. And how long does that process take generally?
Well, it depends on when, when the community decides to amend our municipal plan. This will put us into an eight-year cycle, so at worst, we have to amend it in eight years, but we may amend it sooner, either at the forty or check-in or some other time.
I mean, if you want to make, that's true, if you want to make a, if you want to amend or something, you can do that at any time.
You can, yes, yes, the town can choose and make changes to their plan at any time, and it will have to go through the public hearing process again, and the readoption. And as though, like, eight years is kind of the, the outside window, but the town has the ability to do that whenever they, they want to within that eight-year time.
So, so then, to continue the story, it seems to me that the risk is that this, some big energy company comes in and says, before the amendment happens, says, "Okay, this is your town plan, and this opens the door to development in this area," and then the town of Waterbury has to put up the big bucks to defend against this thing, and you don't know how it's going to turn out, right?
Yeah, and I just wanted clarification, that, and so Steve's clarification makes me feel better, because the plan, as I read it, maybe you could tweak the language, make it clear, that the mapped changes are going to be incorporated through a revision process, same process as you're going through now. So it's legitimate, because I know that that will not have any value unless it does.
But doesn't that mean it also has to go through the CDRPC?
Yeah, it's the same process, you know.
Yeah, we would amend everything, yeah.
But isn't there, isn't there also a problem, I mean, e, even if this were done, and done soon enough, what I've always heard, doing this, is that the town plan is not a, is not a forcing document, you can, it shows what the town wants, and that gets your deference, but it's, so that even if it's written in that you can't build there...
Now, the PUC still has ultimate decision-making authority, they're supposed to give improved deference to the town. And that's what, that's why Steve and Waterbury are trying to do, is I assume, so they have a greater say at the PUC, right?
Right, right. True.
And I want to make sure that they can do that, really, by a majority.
Well, that's already done. It's why we're doing the plan. Stu, you must have something to say.
I'm going for something.
You have something, Jane, you have something to say, and then, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm conflicted, and I think I've written an email to Bonnie and Claire, that I think the process of a review committee of the town plan to be done after a town has voted on it is done in the wrong process. Our mandate is to evaluate that they have written in compliance with the state regulations and the regional plan.
Correct.
And that mandate, I feel, has been met. And so on that basis, I believe we almost have to approve it because it meets what those minimum requirements are.
The extent doesn't...
By the same time, if you want to have amendments...
By the same time, if you want to have amendments, that's fine. I understand that there's disagreement. But my view is this whole discussion should have been done while they were initiating and writing their energy plan, not after they have voted on it. And that's where I have, and I'm sorry, I'm getting a little boof-a-whoop, but.
Everybody gets a turn.
And Bonnie, you know, I mean, rightfully says that, yeah, okay, you know, that's, but I just think this whole process is screwed up because we end up having to do this and then feel bad because we find something or whatever, you know? And it is just, so this is where my.
The problem is the region has no say, really, that the regional town really don't have any opportunity, formal opportunity, until this hearing. And I'm, so I'm agreeing with you. There's, yes, maybe we could show up at Waterbury Planning Commission meetings. I don't think Waterbury would show up at Callas Planning Commission meeting. I mean, we got better things to do and it wouldn't be, really be appropriate. So this is the only appropriate time and it is late in time.
That's it, my case.
So I'm agreeing, Jen.
You're right. Well, I think it's really important, and I'm on the commission too, it's very important that we put faith in staff. I mean, we've got a terrific staff. Eric did a great job. Claire went through our entire plan and identified where we weren't meeting statutory requirements and we addressed those issues. So I think there has to be some faith on our part as commissioners, I'm speaking more with that half, that, that we have to have some faith that staff is doing a really thorough job in working with the municipalities to identify these issues. And these maps were all developed by the Regional Planning Commission staff, the, you know, the language was, was, you know, reviewed and Claire did a track changes, you know, comment of our plan. So I realize that, you know, commissioners don't necessarily, or alternatives don't necessarily have a chance to scrutinize things, but that it's hard, it's a chicken neck, they can't have a, you know, always.
I recognize that I'm raising these issues at the wrong time, but I'm new to this process and, and there, there isn't, you know, a clear communication cycle among towns about the preliminary meetings where you could come as the plan is being developed. I'm out of the loop on that. And so, yes, it's the wrong time, but I'm frustrated because I see this as an issue of not just have you followed the rules and regs and done the appropriate things, but I see it as an issue of is your product correct? I think there's a correctness issue. But be that what it may.
I think Steve has, has, you know, told us that the Waterbury wants to go ahead with this plan at this point without making changes. And I know from stuff I've read and what you've said and what Claire told me that, and from what I've seen, that what we, as you say, what we're here to decide is whether this, as it's written, fulfills the, the guidelines, these things, and, and that it does. And that's, like Stu says, that doesn't make it strong enough. And the things that John has said are very eye-opening. So I guess I would at least hope that if you are going to make some kind of change at some point, to give it even more teeth, that it happens sooner rather than later.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to add that if, if we all put faith in the staff doing their job and the towns responding to the staff, then this committee wouldn't exist, right? We wouldn't need a town plan review committee. And I think today's hearing has shown that there may have been something missed in the, in the, you know, the collaborative work that went on before. And it's a darn good thing that we have this hearing because maybe now the message will get back to Waterbury that they really have a fire to light under themselves to get this amendment done in order to protect themselves from future development.
And we can amend our original plan sooner than eight years too.
Well, I hate to keep you from back to the excuse of Jersey, but that's my, Waterbury, and this goes to any of our towns, has to make, they're going to make changes, like you're going to improve the map or whatever. Better do it before a developer shows up because in Jersey, I know what I've set the great base, and we're all saying, you're going to have a development and the town's suing the set of regulations because they didn't want that development. We, they, we'd be solving that, you're not allowed to do that. So if you wait to, we're all concerned around and a big developer comes and you, and you change the plan, they're going to say, oh, well, you threw that in after you, after you did it.
Once an application's filed, that's the spot.
Yeah, all right. So for all the towns, the best, you know, any of those energies, any of the plants, I was talking about energy, and all this better be done carefully before, you know, the plan. I did not realize it. Seems to me, if you're right, the town is calling up, the developer's calling up the towns that already have an energy plan, then it's almost counterproductive to have an energy plan. And we're sort of chasing the wrong tree here. You know, it seems, that, that seems to me the backwards way of doing this, if you're right. I, that's, it doesn't make any sense to me, but I, I, I would want all, all any of the plans, like, surely this stuff is done before a developer or a possibility raises its head to rise or you're going to make, so it being accused of, oh, just doing it because you don't like that once a developer, am I following the right track here? So that's, that's my comment. So Waterbury, if you amend this, and I, I know they're trying to do, I think, do it very quickly. Don't wait another year when all is saying that you have a developer and a rising, anyway, because they're going to come. So do it, make this a top priority, whatever it is, and bring it back to, you know, the regional plan. But do it, you don't have time, they're kicking you around with this. You've got to make the changes, do it right away. And make it very clear, you, you're doing it, you had to make the changes, you can write the plan, you know how to be done, and you need more information, but you had to do it right away.
What does the title page for the Waterbury Energy Plan say? It says, this plan was written by the regional plan. Here we. It says, this plan was written by the regional plan. And it is preparing.
Prepared.
Oh, prepared by?
Prepared by.
They, they, they put it into, they clean it up.
Oh, okay.
That's prepared.
All right, I thought that was the author. Because there's an awful lot of.
No, it's a lower. It's a local plan, and they'll say, I made a plan too.
So we have a point of order, which is that we need to make a vote at some point on this, and we can do that before, after we close the meeting or before. If we do it before, then Congress can slowly interject it. Do we care? Ready for a vote? Okay. Do I have a motion? I have two.
Should we ask for the final comments or do we think we're done? Or do we ask, should we close the hearing?
Claire says we can either do this with the hearing open or closed, it doesn't matter.
We're done. You're done?
Yeah.
It's your turn.
Motion to close.
Go second.
What's second?
Okay, favor, stand.
Aye.
Okay, so the vote through is closed and we need to take the vote, I guess, on whether or not we recommend to the board of commissioners that Waterbury has an energy plan that is, that complies with the needs of twenty-four BSA forty-three fifty-two. Do I need to have a motion on that or just a vote?
I think it's a motion.
Motion to vote on that, or that, that be the case?
Make a motion.
Good. Second on that?
Second.
So what's the motion?
The motion is that.
We're going to vote.
The motion said we're going to vote, okay. You got to vote all in favor, say aye.
It's a motion to recommend, correct?
Motion to recommend.
Yes, okay.
So, yeah, I, I guess, can I make a motion?
Oh, I think, I think Ron made the motion, seconded by Jen.
Okay. So.
No, it's choice, choice, choice.
Okay. So we're voting on whether or not to recommend, I guess, we're voting, an aye vote is that we recommend to the board of commissioners that Waterbury Energy Plan be approved in its compliance.
Is there a discussion? Are we discussing?
Discussion, yes.
Okay. So would it be possible to recommend that, that the vote include a short presentation by you that says that this conversation took place and that there is this risk that Waterbury is taking on until it goes through with the amendment process?
Yeah, I think so.
Does that mean that I'm amending the motion?
Yes, so.
Well, yeah, I guess, are you saying, let's amend the motion that says we, we recommend the determination of compliance and subsequent that based on what we heard in this meeting, they would work for their, in their own interest to, to amend either the map.
Oh, so amend something different, which is that when our vote recommendation for the energy, energy plan is presented to the CDRPC board, that it would include a discussion of this conversation to say that there is this potential problem or opening, that could be a problem.
Do we need such a, such amendment? I would want to do it anyway.
Or that the regional.
And I would certainly, my Claire's comments.
Well, I think what we usually do when this is brought up at the commission level, there is a time when the chair speaks and the town has an opportunity to add anything before the commissioners. So that's kind of just a, a matter of kind of how, how it, how it goes anyway.
Okay. And do we know for sure that our chair is wanting to talk about it?
I will, I will do what I can in advance time. Claire and John might be there and Steve. But I definitely, I think the points being that, well, twofold, that there were people who made a strong case for the idea that the Schuetsville Corridor is not being perhaps protected as much as it could be and that there be some sort of.
And that there should be a, a, a sync between a correct map and what's written in the map.
Right.
That's what I heard is a clear issue. And that this kind of potential problem be raised for other towns.
For other towns, because, yeah.
Well, yeah, because as I said, other towns have not tackled this, this very complex and pressing issue at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I don't know what the amendment is now. I don't know what the, motion, motion and the amended motion.
So maybe we don't need an amendment. Claire, do you, do you think we need an amendment or, or do you think this will take place anyway?
I mean, I, I'm fairly confident that that discussion will be part of the committee's presentation of a recommendation for approval by, to the board. And I think the chair of the board does provide the opportunity for comment from people with that agenda item for them to act on the recommendation of the committee.
So. Back to the original vote without amendment. All in favor of making this recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
And we oppose, so it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you all. I mean, we had a much bigger crowd last time, but we have more.
Better discussion this time.
More minds and more heart, I think, this time.
I just wanted to make sure that, so the motion was the most simplified motion, the recommendation.
Not very much. Yeah, so I.
Isn't that a huge issue, though? Is it?
I would, I would, I hope that, yeah, maybe in the future. I, I just want to say my, my, my daughter is a lawyer who's prided herself on not being a man in corporate law, making sure that nobody could come in and pick a contract apart in the smallest detail. And I'm, I'm so aware that there are people who are going to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Just as Forsen is very scared.
Well, most corporations towards contracts, such a heavy storm, that it could mean anything in any quarter block.
Yeah, that may be, but I guess you made sure that. Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, that's right.
That's the wrong.
Okay, John, you all set?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Fair enough. Okay, sure enough.
Well, when you come to review the Worcester Town Plan, you'll find.
You're going to be very exact, aren't you?
You'll find that we've taken a lot of liberties and we've made our own decisions.
Okay, so meetings adjourned?
There's a minutes.
There's a minute.
We've got minutes.
Approval of the minutes. Do I, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
We've got two minutes, Don. Do we get the minutes from April and the minutes from March?
I think so, yeah.
So I'm running out of space on you, so I'm not sure.
Well, I'll move that the minutes from March twenty-seventh.
Go second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Do we need another approval?
I think Jen's motion was just for the March.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, here for minutes is one.
Yeah, I'll move that the four minutes be approved.
Go second.
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 Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. I just want to say some of the watchmen, if I remember, was up here, so even though I read, I, as a reason, I, since I tell you, it was, yeah.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So.
Yeah.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have thirty seconds left on my card, I can't believe it.
Well, Stu.